We have Carrie now in the room. Are we?
You are.
Okay. Bill's recording, Matt's, Matt and Joe are on the Zoom. At least by phone, Sharon and I are here in the room. Per, main purpose of this meeting is to set the warning for the McKinley Avenue Public Safety Building. Vote, which we're having on May 23rd. I had sent around three pieces of, well, paper, but you didn't see them as pieces of paper. One is what Kevin Brown, our attorney, had drafted. So kind of a fill in the blanks kind of warning. The second is my attempt to fill in the blanks. And the third is a number sheet showing what was approved on the March 2022 warning and just some numbers for the May 2023 warning. So let's just hop right in. I suggest we start with the number spreadsheet. And if you all have access to it. So our cost. Our cost went up to 5.462, five, yeah, 5,462,000. We subtracted 222,000 because of the savings by changing vendors on the building. And our architect spoke to that the last time he was here. And then we added a 5% owner contingency. Due to Kurt pointing out that we didn't have a contingency in it. And I wondered about that. So I emailed Ed Clark, our architect, and I said, doesn't, isn't there a contractor's contingency? And why are we adding another one? And he said, yes, the contractors have a contingency, but we did this without any owner contingency. It's not a bad idea to have one. So that's why I added the 600, $262,000. That's 5% of the reduced amount after we took the 222 out. So total new not to exceed number is 5,500,000. Two. 502,000.
Yeah, so, so we're up, we're up a little bit from the bid, but that's mostly due to that extra contingency money. See, I was under the same impression as you, Mary, that when they give us the proposal for the building, the bid, they usually put in a contingency amount in case of whatever. And I'm wondering if they were thinking that we needed that in there in case we add something to the building, we'd have extra money. So I'm not, you know, I'm, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think it inflates that number a little bit, and that might scare people a little. But I don't know if that's gonna make a difference one way or the other.
Exactly right on, yeah.
And you know.
This is, this is gonna be one of those where the people who are against it are gonna find every single reason to be against it.
Right.
And is one, you know?
Yeah, and, and so, you know, that, you know, and the whole wording on the ballot idea is a little different than I envisioned because I was thinking we just needed to go back and say, okay, you know, we've approved 4.1 million in X number of dollars for this building. We need another 1.2, or now it'd be like 1.3, and that would get us to this basically the same number. And this is how we plan on doing it. But it almost sounds like we gotta almost start over and ask the voters to approve the higher amount and then the breakdown of the spendings. I think that we should try to strongly point out, however we word the ballot, that the amount to be borrowed is, is not, whatever that number, that isn't going to be, it'll be up to that number like we did the first time. So that if, you know, we get some more grants or we get something, that number could be reduced. And I think that other wording kind of showed that.
I mean, the, the wording at the tail end is, and by any additional grants obtained. You mean that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, we, we, we need to make sure that folks know that we are looking, you know, by some, you know, I know Teddy put in for that, what the difference originally was, the 1.3 million. And should we get all or a part of that? That, that would reduce the amount we would have to borrow by almost half.
Right. Yeah, and Ted's on the line, by the way. And the other thing that is not in here is the $157,000 grant that we have for the emergency management room. Um, I, I sort of didn't put that in, but, but you guys can tell me that we should. I didn't put that in because frankly, our ARPA funds are down because we've already started using them.
Right. Did we?
Sorry, I think Joey, go ahead, and then Matt wants to say something.
Yeah, so is that the same 157, 58 that Teddy was telling us? That's part of the emergency management portion of the building?
Yes, or at least that's my understanding.
Yeah, because I, I was, when I originally figured those numbers out where we had roughly 600,000 in the account or the capital improvement, and then 150,000 in grant money, which brought us up to 750, and if we got another 350,000 from the 1%, we'd be at the 1.1 million. So I was kind of figuring that in. I guess it doesn't matter because it'll all go toward the cost of the building. It's, I'd like to show as best we can a very favorable amount. The, the least amount we gotta ask to go to bond, the better.
Right. Okay. So what's your proposal? Do we show the 157,000 as grant money already received?
Well, you know, I guess Teddy would be, I need to know from him if we can, if that, because that's gonna be reflected as part of the construction costs. And I'm, I'm guessing that the, you know, unless we were planning on buying $150,000 worth of emergency management equipment, would that just be part of the construction cost to build that area within the building? Or, or to help pay, you know, and that's gonna be a multi-use area. Obviously, it's going to be used for different, different things. So if we can use that as part of the construction cost, which I thought we could, then it would be good to show that because that would reduce, that increases the amount of monies, I guess we'd say, on hand and reduce that amount. You know, I was, I was hoping we could stay somewhere around the 2.1 borrowing, but it, it doesn't look like we may be able to now that we've put in that contingency money.
Um, let's see, so Ted's on the line. Ted, did you hear the question and can you respond?
Yes, I did hear the question. I'm sorry for cutting off Mr. Getty, I know he was next. But that 157,000 is towards construction of that area.
Okay, so that can be used.
So. Do you want to put it up at the top as grant money received?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, that's the way I think we gotta show it. We, we show what we have on hand, basically. We, we started with 771,000 of capital improvement fund, and there were some, some dollars with that. And then we were using the ARPA money, and now we have an additional 157,000. And I think we'll be pretty close to somewhere in the neighborhood of a close to a million dollars in that capital improvement fund that can go toward this. So we might not need to borrow 2.6 million, you know, we might be able to be down in that. If we could stay like 2, 3 or something, you know, I don't want to cut it too close, obviously, but the, the least amount we have to, and, and let the, and somehow word that into our ballot that the, that the you know, the, the cost of the building, to, I don't know, maybe the ballot should read the, the, the total amount to be funded as followed, and then give a quick description. And the last item would be, uh, uh, monies borrowed either by bond or, or promissory note not to exceed 2. whatever we come up with, 3, 4 million.
Joey, could, could you, could we hold on the ballot language for a minute and nail down our numbers first?
Okay, yeah, sure.
Okay.
All right.
So, so do we, and so the first question is, do we put it up above the, where we, where we have the the warning numbers? So the new number not to exceed, should we note that we have $157,000 grant for? Ted, what was that pot of money? Was that, wasn't FEMA or was it? Was that Homeland Security?
Nope, that is actually from Senator Welch running through FEMA because they have to, they're the ones who are managing it. But that would be Senator Welch grant that I put in for.
And that's 157, is there any change to it? As in?
There is, I don't have the exact figure, but it's 157, 58, I believe.
058?
Yes.
I think he said just when I mentioned.
157, 058?
I believe so.
All right, so maybe just to keep the zeros on the end, we'll just say 157,000, is that okay with folks?
Yep.
So if we subtract 5, 502, 157 minus. Hate this calculator. All right. I, I haven't heard from Matt yet.
Yeah, we need to hear his comment, but I stepped on it.
Happy to, happy to talk way to calculate and see if I can get you really confused. So I, I think it's important we work through these systematically. Uh, and my comment is on how we state the amount of the ARPA funds, which Mary had touched upon there briefly, so. You pointed out on your spreadsheet that, well, you pointed out what the, the amount was on the last morning, which is higher than it is now because we've already spent some of the money.
Right.
And I'm thinking, and this, this raises other questions, I guess legally, but to compare apples to apples here, it seems to me our, you know, we haven't reduced our total cost by the amount we've already spent. And presumably those architectural and engineering fees are part of that, right? Or is that?
Well, that's, well, that's a question because I think the architect and the engineering fees were prior to the, the VMS low bid, that's not, I don't believe that's part of the VMS low bid. I think that was pre-construction that we were using three sources for. The first was the $30,000 from the lawsuit settlement on the Center Rutland Fire Department. The second was, I think it was $56,000 of leftover grant money for that same Center Rutland Fire Station project. And when we went through those two, we've got a little bit left, but when we went through those two, then we started using the ARPA money for the architectural and engineering costs, the site testing, the getting stuff ready to go out, the specs getting ready to go out to bid and so on. So I guess in a way, if we say not to exceed 5.5, then we're covering those things that we've already expended, including architect and engineering.
Well, I mean, to begin with, we had a vote that authorized us to spend money. So we were covered at the time that vote was done. Now we started to spend the money and we've determined it's not enough, which then goes back to Joe's idea of, well, do we just need to reword this differently to say, would you now please authorize us to, to spend this much more from the following? Because maybe that's less confusing now that I think about it. I'm not sure, but I think you, you answered my immediate question, which was, I want to make sure we were comparing apples to apples on, on the ARPA number. Because I was thinking, well, maybe we ought to just stay with the original grant was and include the interest there on language that we've got in there. Because it, because it is a moving number, but you know, if that's not part of what we're covering, sorry about the clock, then it, then we've gotta use whatever the number currently is, and, and hopefully that will be stationary, I guess. Now on the vote.
It may not be frankly, because our architect continues to work and there's probably gonna be some additionals, I don't know whether there's any additional site testing. But that ARPA money could go down still further by the time we get to the vote.
I thought JP said the site testing was done.
Well, that could be, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think everything that had to be done there was done. I don't think there'll be any, there, there probably won't be any additional costs. Um, you know, I think they're ready to, waiting on the demolition, I don't think they, you know, everything that needed to be done should have been done by the time they went to bid. Because otherwise they wouldn't be able to give us a, a bid that would be worth anything unless they knew all the variables. So I think everything there is done. I don't see any additional costs unless I've, I've missed out on something that needed to be done. I mean, um, you know, the other thing is too, is that we've expended some hundred and something thousand dollars into this project and that, you know, and like Matt said, the least confusing we can make this ballot item, the better that's going to be for folks to understand.
So let me restate the question, maybe if I could. Do I understand correctly, the only thing we actually need the voter's legal authority for at this point is to go borrow more money in one fashion or another?
We need two things. We need the, the bar, the, because the voter said the not to exceed number of 4.2 on the last one, we need to up that to what it actually will be. And then we need the voter's authority to borrow more money and, and either by bond or by a note. And that's a little different too, so.
So the not to exceed number should include not only the VMS bid, but these other costs that we've already incurred?
That would make sense, yes.
So then we have, then the first thing I guess we have to determine is whether the 5.5, which already has one or two cushions built into it, is sufficient to cover that or whether we need to add even more onto that to cover what we've already expended.
Um, I'm looking at Carrie's spreadsheet that I think she just sent you. No. Um, the Carrie's spreadsheet from a previous meeting, the pretty colored one?
The color code, yeah, I have that.
Yeah. Her note says that we, if I'm correct on this, Carrie, that we have expended 132,527,91. That's what JP called the soft costs, that's engineering and architect.
And that was all pre-bid cost.
That's correct.
Yeah, and that was after we got voter approval to move ahead with what we assumed to be a 4.2 million dollar project.
That's correct. And we authorized it, well, the select board authorized use of the 56,000 plus the 30,000 anyway.
Right, so I don't know if we need to include that amount of money again because we've already spent it. So what we need to do is come up with what we have, what the total is gonna be, and I think you want to go with 5.5 million. That number, we should try to get as low as absolutely possible. Anyway, and then we need to ask for either through the capital improvement funds and grants and additional things, but I don't think we need to show that money spent, whatever it is, because the 85,000 that we had on hand, 86 that we did, and then that money is gone. But I don't, that was, uh, I don't know if that money wasn't really part, I don't think, of the 4.1 construction cost, but it might have been. But we just need to know now, because the ARPA funds have gone down, that we need to probably add a little bit because that whole amount, 1,200,000 was going toward construction. And it's looking like we're gonna need a little more because there was nothing on the original ballot regarding the 86,000 for the soft costs. So, so we don't need, we shouldn't put those in again.
And frankly, the one point, the, excuse me, the 4.146 not to exceed number didn't include those soft costs either. I don't think we were thinking that. I were think, I, I think we were thinking this is the construction cost.
I, I do believe you're right, yeah. So, so we don't, we don't need to do that over. We just gotta figure out how much we're short and the best way to ask for it.
Okay, well, let's, let's go down to where we think the money is. That's a much happier topic, so moving right along. And I will tell you that I worked on these numbers over the weekend and I started getting sweaty palms because I thought we may be double counting something. But then I plowed through our, our two annual reports and came over and talked with Carrie this morning, and I think we're spot on, so. The first thing is the ARPA funds, we've already talked about having been reduced by about $60,000 because we've used some of it. The second one is the capital funds and the, the capital reserve fund. We got the voter's permission to use leftover money or money that had gone into the capital reserve fund in the amount of 771,231. That was from fiscal year that ended June of 2021, okay? And I had to keep doing this to myself to keep it straight. So we've got that money and we haven't used it, but that is part of the capital reserve fund of 1,524, so we have to back that up. And that's the capital reserve as of the fiscal year that ended June 2022, all right? So that's my little note. So we take the 1.5, we, we subtract the 771,000. We subtract another amount for the recreation trail, the, the mountain biking trail that Mike Rowe is going to build, that we authorized the money to come out of this. But I think, I'm not exactly sure how much it was, I think it was 80 or 90,000?
I thought 85.
85?
Yeah.
So do you want to, I mean, that's a more accurate number. Do we want to say 85 there instead of 100,000, or do we want to build in some extra?
Yeah, I would, I would go with the 85, I'm pretty sure that's what it was. And the other amount was 125,000 for the highway trucks.
And that came out of the capital?
Yes.
Okay, I knew there was something else, so I'm, and that is how much, Joe? 125,000?
One, we got 125,000 and 85,000 and 771, 231. Those are the, those are the amounts that we have already earmarked out of that 1.5 5 million dollars, whatever's here.
Thank you, that was, I knew there was something else.
Yep.
Um, so I'm just gonna do the math again.
And I think when you get done, Mary, we should be somewhere around 550,000, and that does not include the 45,000 we're over already. Because that won't show up in that capital.
Yeah, I haven't done that yet, I haven't done that yet, so the, the 1% tax. I'm just working on the capital reserve, what it was as of June of last year. So that was. And somebody check my numbers, please. 1, 5, 2, 4, 8, 3, 0. And then we subtract 85,000 for Mike Rose. Damn it. And then 125,000 for the two highway trucks. And then the 771, 231 that we had already authorized. So I am down to 543,599.
That's what I got.
Okay. Available balance as of 6th, June 30th, 2022. So we're a little off, but not too bad. But, so. Do we use all of what was left? In last year's?
Yeah, I mean, that was what the plan was, was to use that amount. That, that was how I arrived at that, the numbers. I had figured roughly 550,000 in the capital improvement fund that wasn't earmarked anywhere. 100 and, 150,000 that we got through the grant, that brought us to 700,000. And then looking, figuring the 45,000 that we know is there from the third quarter, or third, yeah, third quarter that was over. So that, that got it up a little bit, and, and then I was, we were anticipating, based on coming up with roughly somewhere between 300 and 350,000. I was on the high side, I figured 350 for the fourth quarter, and that's how we arrived at that 1.1 million.
Yeah, but we're, we're close, Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, so educate the new guy here. The capital reserve, am I correct, that it's largely funded by the unbudgeted excess of, of 1% money each year?
And also the unused money from our departments. If they had like rec off and turns a little sum over because they haven't spent it all. Sometimes general fund does, police doesn't usually, fire department does, and the highway department rolls over anyway, but not into this fund. They get to, they're the only ones that get to carry over, yeah.
So we'll be talking about the 1% money in just a minute, but just generally, and again, I realize there's been some fluctuation on this in the last couple of years, but how much would you say this typically sees going into it each year and put it to normal demands on it if we drain this thing?
If we drain it right now, we're drained, and the voters let us do it. We're drained only for the next, well, the rest of April, May and June. Because that's what, because we have another amount coming in as of June 30th of 2023. We'll speak the accounts then again.
In, in any, in, in automatic? in, in automatically, Mary, I mean, part of the reason for setting that fund up was because of, we have no clue what that one percent's going to generate. This allows us to put the act, the, any that comes in over what we estimate. I believe this current budget, we estimated one point one million dollars. And the general fund was about one point two million. So, you know, we're right there, and then, and we did the same last year, and last year we had a very good year, and it was three or four hundred thousand over. And this is, that, that fund was designed to allow us to earmark that money for something and not just have it floating around in limbo where it could end up being lost to the town because we're not supposed to have excess money. So the, that's part of the funding for that capital improvement is the one percent money. We don't ever know what it is. The other numbers, Mary, that are in the general fund that are fluctuating numbers, and they're at that top part of the general fund there, the delinquent taxes, I believe there's a fees for the vault and different recording fees, and all of those monies, those all show up on the income side, and none of those are spent, only a very little amount is spent toward the general budget. If the one percent comes in over the general budget, those funds are also, because they're income, end up moving into that capital improvement fund. If I'm not, that, that, that is, so. You know, we have already covered the entire expense of this year's general fund. The, the current operating budget has already been covered, and we still have one quarter plus any other fees that are going to be paid, that have been paid in over the first three quarters of this fiscal year. So there's a good chance it's, it's, we don't know what it is, but there's a good chance there'll be quite a, a amount in there that, that will end up, you know, being available. And this is where it gets tricky is, you, you don't want to try to spend money that you don't have in hand, you know, you're anticipating, but you don't know. So we kind of have to work around, you know, a couple of things there. I, I think we'd be okay saying one point one million or even one point two, but beyond that, we would be really probably sticking our necks out.
As, I'm sorry, the one point. I, I lost you at the very last part.
Well, it's, it's the amount that we want to say is going to be available in that capital improvement fund. Um, we, we don't know for sure how much we're going to generate in that fourth quarter in one percent, but there is also those other income items that are not tallied till the end of the year. And the one percent has already funded the general fund, the general account that general budget's already paid for. So we've.
I don't, I'm, I'm going to disagree a little bit, even though I agreed with you before. I think I'm going to disagree now because what, I think we take the, we, we fund the net amount of the general fund, which already includes anticipated income, including the big one percent. So I'm not sure that we've ignored the additional revenue streams.
Well, it, and, and that was one of the questions that was brought up when we had the town meeting on, uh, before the, on the March sixth, was that that budget is showing a two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar surplus before we even started. That, that was one of the big topics that kept getting brought up and brought up, and not all of that two hundred, you know, you can't, it's, it's, it's whether it's monies that are generated through fees at the clerk's office or delinquent taxes or one percent money, and it all goes together. So you, it's hard to say that, well, that surplus is one percent money or that surplus is delinquent tax money. It, it, but our proposed budget for this year had a surplus of two hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Yes, I'm looking at it now. Yeah.
Yeah. So that, that's why I'm saying, you know, we, we are usually very cautious about what we anticipate. I just, I'm comfortable, but I'm scared to say, okay, we could maybe do one point three or one point four. You know, and we'll have more than we have. We, you know, we have to kind of, you know, be cautious about how much we're going to say is available in that month, in that account this year. That, at the end of June.
I'm just doing a quick check. I'm taking the totally anticipated revenue from the town report, which includes the other revenue as well as the one percent tax, and then I'm subtracting off the budgeted expenses. And I get the number that you did of two, seven, three, one, eighty-eight, and that tells me that we did include not just the anticipated one point two percent, but the other revenue as well.
Yeah, and, and also I think.
So we've already counted, I mean, to, to answer your, your, you know, question, I think we have included in the anticipated revenue from other sources for the general fund. So that, I don't think it's there. So let me, let me just explain something. The reason why I didn't say more money from the capital fund when we end fiscal year twenty twenty-three is because I just, I ignored that because we don't know how much it's going to be. But we do know that we're already way ahead on the one percent tax. So that's why I said the forty-five thousand that we're already ahead plus some number, and as you said, somewhere between three hundred thousand and three hundred and fifty thousand to add. Yeah, it's from the fourth quarter. Yeah, okay.
So.
Okay, wait, Matt, go ahead for a minute.
Well, no, let, let Joe go while we're on the subject and before I get a subtract.
Well, the, the, what I would, I guess, what I was trying to get, I, I was taking the long way to get to a point Matt brought up about draining the fund. And I don't think we will. If, and, and I would be pretty comf, you know, I think that we could go into Carrie's office or, or in another few weeks. If there's delinquent taxes, we could find out how many, how much delinquent taxes we've collected this fiscal year. We could find out how much fees she's collected for the use of the vault or copies or research. I don't remember those, and I should just open up my town report and see what those items were. But we could come up with, with a realistic number as to how much we've already collected. And, and you would be able to kind of figure out that. The, the point is, is if, let's say we, we're going to earmark one, an additional one point two million dollars from the capital reserve fund on top of the seven hundred and seventy thousand. So that, that, let's say we want to do that. And at the end of the year, I believe we will have that, and I don't think we will drain the account because there are other sources that go into that. So we may end up with a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand or somewhere in that neighborhood that's from the other budgets and some other things. So we just, that, that's what I was trying to, in a long, roundabout way, figure out what Matt was saying so that there is a comfortable level that we would have some money available if we were to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of one point nine million out of that account.
Well, I'm going by the money that we actually know we have in the account right now. The fiscal year that ended last year before, and that, we know, the seven seventy-one plus the five forty-three, five ninety-nine, that's one point three million.
Yeah.
So.
And we need, and we need about, we need about six hundred thousand more.
To close the gap entirely, so we're not bonding for more than what, what we said.
Well, no, no, Mary, Mary, you gotta, you gotta remember the seven hundred and seventy-one thousand was already figured in to the previous amount. So that amount is, even though it's, right, so that amount is already part of the four point one million. We need roughly one point three in addition to that. So we have.
Disagreeing, we're just trying to find the, I'm, I'm doing my math differently, Joe. That's why I did the spreadsheet so that we could all work from the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I'm figuring what we needed additionally.
Yeah, I know.
It's good, it's good to work if these from two different directions to, it's a good.
And if we get to the same place at the end, it'll be good.
Yeah, so, so Mary, if, if we're going back to the chart, I think this works out, I, you know, I, I, now I've reviewed Carrie's one percent money chart, and I get that, and I think the three fifty number that you plugged in makes sense. And so if you use that number, you take the capital reserve that's available, that we figured the five, five, four, three, five, nine, nine, and then you, which is, which is short from what you had by what, a hundred and ten thousand dollars? But then you factor in Ted's grant, and we should be now that sort of makes up for for that, and then some in terms of figuring what their borrowing amount is on bottom line.
Okay. Do the math on that one.
Yeah, the, the variable in this whole thing is how much money will be available June thirtieth? And, and that's the tough part of anticipating how much we would say we will have on hand. I think, you know, the actual numbers are somewhere in eight or nine hundred thousand probably, or a little more. We're, we're, we're kind of hoping for the three hundred and, three hundred and fifty additional. But I, I just.
So if, if I do what Matt just said, okay, we take the seven seventy-one, two thirty-one from twenty, the year twenty twenty-one. We add to it the five forty-three, five ninety-nine from twenty twenty-two. We add to that five hun, three hundred and fifty, which is the one percent tax that we pretty sure we're already ahead of. Those three things add up to one million, six sixty-four, eight thirty. And then we subtract from that the grant of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand that we already know we have.
When, when you add that to the, you add that, you have to add that.
Yeah, okay. That's even better. We're getting better.
Right, yeah, because that's, that's additional monies that we, we have.
I'm just looking at so many numbers for so many days that.
Those of us that see numbers are, are ahead of you a little bit.
Okay, so that's one million, eight, eight hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty that we need to raise by bonding. Well, wait a minute, no, because we still have to subtract it from the new higher amount, which is the five point five.
So, so basically, we come up with about what, would you say one point eight million?
Well, no, I need to double check that because.
Well, you, you gotta, you gotta figure that you have the ARPA money. That's left.
Yeah, wait, wait. Don't, don't talk. Me and Carrie are going to do the numbers for a minute. Make sure we're both on the same page. Okay?
And then I'm going to ask you what you use for numbers.
Okay. Okay.
What was his grant? One fifty?
One fifty-seven.
Trying to come to a final number.
Yep.
Almost did. That actually makes the number higher.
I'll put my math. My number is, well, depends what you compare it to. I have a to be borrowed amount that comes out less than what Mary had on its spreadsheet.
Oh, really?
Correct. That's what I have, too.
You're taking five point five, and you're subtracting everything out and adding the grant money in, right? Basically?
You subtract the grant money from the five point five.
Right, yeah, it comes out somewhere, yeah.
So would you use, Mary, for the ARPA money that's left?
I use the one, one, six, two, three, two, zero.
Okay, that's, you know, just about thirty-eight thousand less than what I had now, because I was figuring, I put, I could change that number, because what I did was add up the ARPA money, the already earmarked capital improvement money, the balance that's in the account right now, the grant, and anticipated additional three hundred and fifty in the capital improvement. And that amount comes to just shy of three million dollars.
I'm going to walk over and see what Carrie has.
Okay, we agree. All right, so let's go through.
What's your bottom line, Mary?
The bottom line needed to borrow is two million, five hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred fifty.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, it's pretty close to what I figured.
Okay.
Which is, which is up about what, four hundred thousand from what we originally asked for?
It's less than four hundred thousand, and that includes building in a cushion that we didn't used to have.
Right, there's two hundred thousand dollar cushion in there that we didn't originally have.
More than half the increase is cushion.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, maybe we shouldn't. Yeah, maybe we shouldn't use words like cushion.
Room, room for error.
The the Murphy amount.
The Murphy amount.
Of course, of course, our low bidder lives in the town, so he's gonna know what that number is.
Right. But but that money is only for, in my opinion, the 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 owner's. Uh contingency is only for things that were not in the original bid. That is not for stuff they that's not for stuff they messed up on.
Correct, because they have their own contingency for stuff they messed up on.
Right.
That's what I checked with Ed Clark about.
Right, and I, you know, actually, I think when we did center station, I don't remember if we. Oh, actually, the way we handled center station was is we asked for a two million dollar bond. And the project came in at one million, two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand, and then by the time. They figured out the stuff that was messed up, we ended up spending one point five. And then after we fixed the stuff that wasn't designed right by the architect, you know how that all went. We ended up spending it all.
Yeah.
So I think it's not a bad idea to have that, but it shouldn't be. Or stuff they missed or stuff they didn't bid out properly.
Yeah, I it that's I agree with you. So let's go to. The ballot. Question. Are are we in agreement? Do we all know? I mean, we've got three people who came out with the same amount. So. Let me just last, last couple of things that I wanted to make sure of. We're draining the capital account twice for the year twenty twenty one and for the year twenty twenty two. But we know we have those funds. And we've taken out for the the trucks. And we've taken out for um the rec trail. So those I'm comfortable with now, we're good. So we know we have the five forty three, five ninety nine.
Yeah, I think that based on Kerry's figures and and stuff, um, I think that's that's good. And like I say, we.
Let me toss one more thing out there, which is. We've got the one percent tax at three hundred and fifty thousand. We out of that forty five, we already know is is excess. And so we're kind of undercounting the last quarter payment at three hundred and five thousand. Even though the previous three have all been over three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, is there, see, that's that's where. Um. I don't know. It's gonna be hard, yeah, to word the ballot that. How we're going to ask for a certain amount because I think we need to go with knowns and and I think we'll be okay. Yeah.
I think we need to be conservative on that number.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that because we were asking for authority to borrow up to a certain amount. We don't have to borrow that amount if we find out that more revenue has come in for the one percent.
So. So if there's some way we can. Um word this that the the minimum amount we would be asking. Or we would be taking from the capital improvement is X dollars. And the maximum amount we're gonna borrow is X dollars. That way, if we find out we've got more in that capital improvement. Even if it's a couple of hundred thousand and and we do that without draining the capital improvement, that there will still be a little left. We can lower the 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 borrowing amount. I that's, I I was hoping there was some way we could do that.
Okay, well, let's take a look. Um, so the cost to exceed. Should we put five point five million or five point five eight thousand?
Or do we? Yeah. I don't know, did you, i- is there a way to do this without um? I don't know if there's a way to do that, that of not trying not to confuse folks. But I I think you have to. Show them what the new cost is and how we plan on paying for it.
Okay, so I guess.
It it, you know, because they've already approved the project and I was hoping we. And I was hoping we could just ask them to approve additional funds because if you put this out there. That we are asking them to reapprove the project at a higher cost, they might say no.
What if they approve? What if and and if that's the case, so. And and they say, no, we're not gonna give you the higher amount. If we do the ballot the way you're suggesting. Then we've we've got to cut a million, two or million, three from the project.
And we wouldn't be able to do it.
Well, yeah, so so I guess. Do we tell them the whole amount that it is now? Instead of relying on what they approved earlier and try and tack on to it.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we just restate what the not to, the cost of the project is. And what we're asking for is additional borrowing authority. And then say. If we say anything else, the remainder be paid for by funds already available. You know, through group, you know, ARPA or the grants, capital reserve.
By funds available from ARPA without putting the numbers in?
Well, we could try, but I mean, we went through all this exercise to try to determine the numbers really for the purposes of determining how much we need to borrow. And uh some of that keeps changing. And then my and then my other concern as well, if we word it the way it's structured now. And then the town votes it down, what does that mean? Does that mean we couldn't spend the money? Well, money we already spent, I guess is not included.
Well, we lost a hundred and fifty two thousand.
Not was a little less than that, but. Yeah, so we're back to, let's just piece this through. I'm looking at Kevin's. Kevin and or my numbers, whichever. Let's look at Kevin's, all right? So the um, the public safety building at a cost not to exceed. Five million, five hundred, two thousand dollars. We okay with that?
I don't like the word not to exceed because that's how we got here.
That's right.
But if we don't have it or the voter is gonna vote it down.
Yeah, I don't know.
All right, so question mark. To be paid for with federal American Rescue Plan Act grant funds and we not put an amount in. Plus interest thereon with no amount. Funds from the town's capital project reserve account. We don't name an amount. Local option tax receipts and we don't name an amount.
I wouldn't put that in at all, Mary, because that's part of the, that's part of the uh capital improvement. I don't think you have to.
It will be for. That will be for the year twenty twenty three, so we don't have to, okay.
We don't have to show, yeah, we don't have to show that separately. Because like I said.
With the balance of.
Up to.
Up to two point five, one, seven, eight, fifty or some other amount.
I think that's a good number.
Pardon? Okay, two million five. Two million, five hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty. Okay.
Yeah. Which is up what about? That's about four hundred thousand more than we originally asked for or a little less.
Or less.
Okay, so we're we've taken out all of the numbers except for two. One is the not to exceed number of five million, five hundred and two thousand. And then balance of up to two million, five seventeen, eight fifty to be funded by. Bonds or promissory notes or by any additional grants obtained.
Yeah, because because basically. Some way to identify that that difference between what we're asking and what the building is is monies we have on hand.
And we've we've said that without putting the numbers to. To be paid for by ARPA. Interest on ARPA, the town's capital project reserve account. Um, and we've taken out the local option tax because we anticipate that'll just roll over. Into twenty twenty three and frankly. If if we're in construction, there could be yet another year's worth. Um, before we actually have to go out to bond.
Yeah, depending on when the construction starts, I'm hoping they'll be able to start. Right after we approve that, you know, sometime July, August, September, so they could get some of it done, but um. So. I think that uh to be, you had the ARPA money. And the interest, um, how, I mean, that interest is probably a significant amount.
It's over, it's ten thousand dollars and growing.
Okay, so what I'm wondering is if we don't put that in. Because I guess you could, it it wouldn't matter. So the ARPA money, the interest, the capital reserve fund. And um maybe grants, grant money, that would show the hundred and fifty thousand. Or we got through that, you know, that would be where that grant money would show up. Because we, that way, if we get more grant money. We aren't um. You know, we're not, uh, our hands aren't tied that we can't put more grant money to this.
Well, if we, so I'm not sure where you want it, but we already have at the end of that. By the issuance of bonds or promissory notes and by any additional grants. Do you want to move that any additional grants up under? Somewhere else or leave it where it is?
Well, I think because we didn't, in our initial amount there, you you, the the wording for the ARPA money. And the capital improvement, but we didn't identify the grant we do have. So and so that would be uh any grants or additional grants. Maybe should go there. And then the the amount, you know, that way. Like I said, if we find out in two months or before we go to bond, that we have. Another bunch of money from the uh, uh, I think that was a Bernie Sanders fund that uh Teddy put in for. And then we won't ha- we can spend that without having to get approval to spend it. So it could go either place.
So what I've got. And and I'm I'm repeating this because we're gonna have to vote on something.
Right, right, right.
All right, so what I've got is, shall the town of Rutland replace the McKinley Avenue Fire Station with the public safety building? To house the Rutland Town Fire and Police Police Departments. At a cost not to exceed five million, five hundred, two thousand. And to be paid for by. Federal American Rescue Plan Act Grant Funds and interest thereon. The town's capital project reserve account. Any grant funds obtained now or.
Additionally.
Any grant funds obtained. Why don't we just put it that way?
Yeah, there you go.
With the balance of up to two million, five hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. To be funded by the issuance of bonds or promissory notes, period.
Perfect. I like that.
Was that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Right, okay.
Discussion, Matt.
So I guess I just would pose a small edit on the tail end of that since.
Yep.
We wouldn't be issuing a promissory note um. And I do, it's challenging to word this with both options, but maybe something like. The balance uh to be paid for by. Uh borrowing through issuance of a bond or. Through.
Conventional.
Conventional buying or. Conventional borrowing.
Yeah, I'm I'm, this is the language that our town attorney gave us, so.
So technically, when you borrow money from a bank, is that considered a promissory note?
Well, it's secured by a promissory note, which is secured by real estate. It's it's a.
We'll put it, yeah, we're gonna put the town up as security for a two point five million dollar alone. I I I really. There you go. It but but we should really, when, you know, if this gets approved, which I'm really hoping it will, and I think, you know, we stand a good chance here. Um, that is the avenue we should try to go and and the major reason for that. Borrowing money locally is that. If we have additional monies available through either one percent or whatever, we could pay that off early. And we would not have to carry it to the term, the limits of the term like you do with a bond. That that we learned that the hard way with Center Altman Station, that you cannot pay a bond off early.
Yeah, we did.
So um. In whatever language that Matt can come up with that sounds good, I I'll I'll probably agree to.
Yeah, I just I just read uh his language again and I'm fine with it. Actually, I withdraw my comment.
Okay.
Um, I do have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, Joe touched on the construction schedule and how this may affect the accumulation of additional funds. And I'm wondering what the first step of that construction presumably is demolition. Uh, so what happens? To the fire department once that occurs? Um, I mean, is there a date approaching quickly by which? They have to decide if they're either it's go or no go this year?
I I would. I haven't talked to Chris, but I do believe they have a plan in place. To house, one of the trucks will go to center. And I'm guessing a lot of the equipment that's in McKinley will either go to go to center. I do believe Green Mountain Power is going to allow us to put. A truck there, um, we we would, and then they're gonna have to find a home for two, I think. I'm not sure if he's found it, and what they're waiting on is. The go ahead from the voters to continue with the project, then they can seriously work on getting the relocation. And then VMS has got to fit us into their schedule, which they're waiting on the twenty third. By the twenty fourth, positive vote, everything would probably be moving forward at that point. Um, I I think that, you know, that that would. Be what would uh governs the construction setting and and you're right, Matt, the first thing is is they demolish the building. They do whatever site work needs to be done and and ideally. Um, having a brother that's in this business for like forty years, if they can get the concrete in the ground. By the end of November, they can get their superstructure up and get that enclosed and worked all winter. They would like that project because that gives VMS a job for the winter.
Does that answer your question, Matt, as as best we can, I guess? All right, so motion's been made and seconded to approve the warning language. As previously read and recorded, right? Do it that way. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Matt, if you said aye, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
All right, I'll vote aye as well. So four in favor. None opposed, one absent. Okay, good. Now, how? Quickly, let's see, Kerry needs this warning signed. By as many of us as can sign it.
I'll be over. I'll I'll make sure I get over there tomorrow.
Okay, can you make it in tomorrow morning, Sharon? I can too, so we'll sign it tomorrow morning. And Bill is gonna, you know, toggle it up. That also has to include the language that talks about. That also has to include the language that talks about the open positions, but not the names of the candidates. Okay, the warning that we have to sign as opposed to the ballot that you do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Be me.
Okay. That's why Bill's smiling so much. Okay, this is all on Kerry.
Can we try to do it later in the day? I wanna be able to.
So not in the morning?
What time would be good?
Would Kerry, do you want it tomorrow, or would you like us to come in on Wednesday?
Whatever is good for your schedule, I just, when I get in there in the morning, this will be my first thing to do. And I want to make sure that I can get it formatted the right way.
Okay, I can't do it first thing Wednesday morning, I gotta be a Montpelier all day, so that's an early. But I can do it tomorrow afternoon as late as you want me to.
Okay, why don't I have it ready by like one, and I'll be open from.
That's fine with me.
That's good with.
Okay, good. I don't know how to get Matt's signature because he's remote. Is that?
I can send a copy if that does it you any good, otherwise, uh, I can sign it on Thursday.
Oh, okay. Kerry said that's okay. Okay.
Really, all we're doing is that signature warning, is that the one that's going in the paper?
I think that's correct.
Yeah, because I've never done this proportion.
Yeah.
So really. The warning is just for posting in the paper. So if he can, Thursday.
And that's still, but we have to be within thirty days, no sooner than thirty before and no more than forty. So I think we're well within that, right?
So, so we can sign it tomorrow afternoon.
I think.
Correct.
On tomorrow afternoon.
All right.
Get here and sign it when he.
Okay, good. Um, so let me just do a couple of real quick things. Um. Unrelated to this, any other, any other thing we need to do related to this? Okay, I'm opening the, um, no longer pink folder first. This is a letter of support. The Rutland Town Select Board is giving its full support of the proposed shared use path project on U.S. Route Seven North. In addition to supporting the project, we also commit to the long-term maintenance of the shared use path. This is to support our grant application to the AOT for JP's sidewalk. Is that something you folks are comfortable with moving on this evening?
Yeah.
Um, I just had one question about it, Mary. Um. We've gone from just a sidewalk to a shared use path, which is like seven or eight feet wide versus four. Um, and that was because there was a, additional grant monies or more grant monies available for a shared use path and either little or no money available for a regular sidewalk. Is, is that how we got where we are?
Um, Bill says it scores better. So I think by, we got a better chance.
Okay, yeah, because I, I know when this started, we were looking for a sidewalk to get folks a place to walk, so they're not on that little narrow, well, about four inch wide strip of Route Seven where people have been walking. Um, and when you go to a shared use path, it, I think it's, it's quite a bit wider and quite a bit more extensive, but um, if maybe in the long run, our portion of it won't be anymore. Um, so I would support it.
Okay, is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Word, Sharon moves to sec, um, seconds the motion. Uh, any discussion?
Quick question, um, I didn't see this on the last version of the agenda, is that a problem for any reason?
I don't, oh, wait, the last version of the agenda would have said any other business, I think.
Uh, any other new items, that's true.
Yep.
Is it?
Yeah.
That's the way the agenda looked.
Okay. Yeah, Bill's confirming that language, any other new items was there. Okay. All in favor of the motion to support the shared use path, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Joe's an aye, Matt, was that an aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, so. I'm signing the one I have here, Sharon, if you could, okay. Then, there, we have one more thing for action and then one more thing as, um, information and tell me how to deal with it. The one for action, North Star fireworks. Um, and I'm not sure who was in on this discussion, and that was Joey was not. You'll recall that we budgeted ten thousand dollars for fireworks. Um, when we were told that North Star, our usual vendor for the Fourth of July, was going to charge us fifteen thousand dollars. Our, our chair at the time, um, Mr. Choffey said that he would, he would check with somebody he knew who, um, did do fireworks. He did, he was gonna get a better deal for the town. Long story short, that particular vendor needed to get his federal, I think it's ATF license, and he has not done so. And he, in fairness, came and said, I'm not licensed yet, and I can't guarantee I will be by the Fourth of July or by the fireworks time. So we then had Bill turn back to North Star, who said, yes, we can cover it um, for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. So we're exceeding, and I think, I think we agreed at the last meeting to pay that amount.
We did.
And to, um, go with July second, which is the Sunday. Now we have in front of us the contract. And we're supposed to give them, which needs to be signed by us. And there is a rain date proposed of July ninth. Which is.
The following Sunday.
Yeah. What's your pleasure?
Sign it.
The, um, Sharon, Sharon says sign it.
Well, we agreed to sign it. When we discussed.
And I think the only thing that's different is the, um, the date, the rain date, we just pray to God it doesn't rain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the fact that they're willing to fit us in when we went somewhere else, because they're wicked busy that time of year, I guess, that's a plus and. Yeah, I'm gonna sign in it.
So I'm gonna treat Sharon's, Sharon's motion to include authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the select.
Amen.
Okay, and Joe, I'll treat your comment as a second.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor of North Star uh, signing with me, signing the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Matt's yes, Joey's yes, and I am signing. Okay, that's done. The last thing we have received. Um, an offer to purchase a piece of property which the town owns, it's thirty acres, it's, um. How's the, it is off Route Seven, it's in back, across the street from Ace Hardware and behind a thirty acre parcel of land. Which has been owned by Pistols and Roses. It is currently. Um, I'm not gonna disclose who the offer is from. And I'm not gonna disclose the amount. Um, and I'm looking for your guidance as to what we do for a process. I think I have to check in with Kevin to make sure. Uh, and there are copies of this on everyone's desk here, okay? Um.
So, this parcel, Mary, is accessible. Um, it's up off from, uh, yeah, I can't think of the, uh, street.
Bill thinks it's Sherwood, does that sound right?
Yeah, um, I had a brief conversation with Ted this morning um, regarding if I knew anything about it and.
But go ahead.
Anyway, I, uh, I don't know. I, I guess I never knew the town owned any land there, but if somebody wants it, I'd be thinking we oughta look at letting it go.
All right, I'm gonna check with our town attorney if you folks agree, just to make sure we follow the correct process.
Yep.
And, um, the offer is here on your desk and the, um, proposed owner, the, or the offeree is named in it, so we're, no action we're gonna take tonight. Um, unless somebody tells me, don't look into it with the town attorney.
No, I think.
Okay. Yeah, Joe, you think?
No, I'm fine, I, I, like I said, I didn't know we owned any land there till this morning.
Well, it's not the most prime piece of real estate, let me tell you. And I think the mapping is gonna show you that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, now that I've been a little bit, I know where it is.
Is there a map there on the desk for us to all understand this better?
Yes.
Okay, great.
There's uh, a map, and then there's, um, it looks like FEMA flood map, and that should tell you where this is going.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other business we have to conduct?
I'm good.
Not all, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Sharon moves to adjourn, second, Matt seconds. No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you all very much.
Okay.
Yeah.